Outdoor dining from West Coast Sausage Works. And then, a little bit earlier, one from the Capitola Wine Bar. So just want to make sure you've seen those. If not, we can read them aloud tonight. Have you all seen them?
Yes.
Yes.
Great.
Yes, I got them.
We won't put you through the torture of the read aloud. Sean, are you good?
Yes, I'm ready.
Okay. Chloe, how are you doing?
I'm ready whenever.
Okay, we've got Chloe Woodmancy with us tonight, City Clerk.
The top of my screen says we are still in a practice session, is that? Am I out to anything?
Yeah, we can start it whenever you're ready.
Okay, it's seven o'clock, so let's go live. Are we live?
That's correct.
Okay. Hey, good evening and welcome to the November 4th meeting of the Capitola Planning Commission. Once again, we're moving through Zoom. And hopefully, one of these days, we'll be meeting live again. So there are several ways that you can join in the meeting. You can watch it live on Charter Communications Cable TV Channel 8. And tonight, our technician is Kingston. But you can also join the meeting via Zoom. And if we can have that screen up, Sean, please. There we go. So you can see, there's various ways you can join the meeting. And I know we do have people tonight that are wishing to comment on some of the items on the agenda. So those are the ways you can do it. So with that, Chloe, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Christensen.
Hi, here.
Thank you. Commissioner Newman.
Here.
Commissioner Westman.
Here.
Commissioner Wilk.
Here.
And Chair Ruth.
Here.
Thank you.
And now, if everyone will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, one nation, one nation, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, it brings us to the second item on the agenda tonight, which is oral communications. Katie, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No additions or deletions to the agenda.
Alrighty. Okay, this is the time for any public comments for items that are not on the agenda. So if you wish to address the commission for some other reason besides what's on the agenda, now would be the time to do it. So we'll give you a little bit of time to join the meeting to comment on some item that's not on the agenda.
I'm not seeing any public comment in our inbox.
Okay, then we'll move on to Item C, which is Commission Comments. Are there any comments from the Commissioner?
I have one, this is Susan.
Susan?
Since we have Chloe with us tonight, I just wanted to thank her for the sort of bi-weekly newsletter she puts out on an email to all of us. I think it's very well done, and it's nice to hear about what's going on in the community. So I think that's a real asset, and I enjoy it.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, ditto for that, thank you, Chloe. Any other Commission comments? Hearing none, then we'll bring it to the staff. Any staff comments? Katie, Sean?
No staff comments. No, for additions and deletions, I should have mentioned that we have had a few last-minute public comment come in this evening. For one for 115 Saxon and two items for the outdoor dining. And those have, those made it to the Planning Commission in time, and they've had time to review those comments.
Okay, thank you, Katie. An hour or two, the approval of minutes. We have the minutes from two previous meetings tonight to approve. The first is the minutes from August 19th of 2021. Do we have a motion to approve or make corrections?
I move to approve, this is Commissioner Wilk.
I'll second it. Commissioner Westman.
Hey, we have a motion to second to approve the meetings from, the minutes from August 19th. May I have the roll call, please, Chloe?
Commissioner Christensen.
Hi.
Commissioner Newman.
Hi.
Commissioner Westman.
Hi.
Commissioner Wilk.
Hi.
Chair Ruth.
Hi.
Thank you.
That will be it in another month, Chloe. Item, Item B is the Planning Commission minutes from September 2nd of 2021. Is there a motion to approve those minutes or any additions or corrections?
I move approval, this is Commissioner Wilk.
I'll second it, this is Commissioner Westman.
Hey, we have a motion to second to approve those minutes from September 2nd. The roll call, please, Chloe.
Commissioner Christensen.
Hi.
Commissioner Newman.
Hi.
Commissioner Westman.
Hi.
Commissioner Wilk.
Hi.
Chair Ruth.
Hi. Okay, the motion carries, those minutes are approved. It brings us to Item 4, Consent Calendar. We do have a request tonight to pull the only item on the consent calendar off for public discussion. That would be Item A, 115 Saxon Avenue. So with the consent of the commission, we'll pull that off for public discussion. Any objections? Okay, hearing none? This is a design permit to convert a roof to second-story deck on a single-family residence located on Saxon Avenue in the R1 zoning district. Do we have a presentation, Sean?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners, Chair Ruth. The application before you is a proposal to convert a flat roof into a second-story deck on a single-family, non-conforming residence located at 115 Saxon Avenue. Proposed second-story deck is located on the side of the property, adjacent other residential uses, which requires Planning Commission approval through a design permit. The existing two-story residence, as it appears today, surrounded by one- and two-story, single-family homes in the Depot Hill neighborhood. The existing structure is non-conforming because it encroaches the rear and side required setbacks. An aerial of the site with the adjacent 117 Saxon Avenue. The applicant is proposing exterior modifications to the second story, including a parapet glass wall extension and new doorway to allow the flat roof to function as a second-story deck. Deck is approximately 342 square feet. Under the zoning code update that went into effect earlier this year, covered and uncovered exterior spaces such as decks, porches, and balconies do not count towards the total floor area calculation. So that 342 is not included in the FAR. The deck area, shaded in blue above, is closest to two, single-family residences, which are both located on the property at 117 Saxon Avenue. Design criteria F requires that the city consider and minimize privacy impacts of adjacent properties with building permit features such as entrance doors, entrances, doors, and decks. In considering the adjacent residences, the applicant has proposed constructing an 18-inch-tall privacy glass feature on top of an existing 42-inch-tall wall facing the rear and side property lines. They would be built on that orange line seen here. The existing first-story structure is setback four feet from the side property line, which complies with the first-story setback. To comply with the six-foot setback that applies to upper stories, the applicant has proposed construction of an inset railing two feet from the existing parapet wall. The blue line represents that setback for the new railing, and there's an example that the applicant provided, which would not be visible from the street or from the adjacent residences. There are the existing and proposed elevations. The proposed project will have limited visual impact on the existing appearance of the residence, except for the privacy glass extension and the new deck doorway. With that, staff recommend Planning Commission approve project based on conditions or approval and findings.
Hey, thank you, Sean. Are there any questions for staff before we open this up to the public?
I have a question, this is Commissioner Wilk. So I read that the second story complies with the six-foot setback requirement, even though there's a non-compliance on the first story, is that correct?
The, uh, it's interesting, the first story does comply with the first-story setbacks of four feet on the side. And the second story, if it were functioning as a deck all the way out for the full lot coverage or of the structure's coverage, it would be within that six feet, which is why the applicant has that railing set two feet in.
The non-visible railing?
Right.
And is there a, is there a 10% side yard? Or 1715-110E requires the 10%? Is that, is that what's non-compliant?
The first-story setback for the side is 10% of lot width, which in this case would be four feet from a total lot width of 40 feet.
I thought you said the side yard setback was non-compliant. Did I miss something?
That, that would be on the opposing property side.
Oh, my, okay. Got it, thank you.
Any other questions for staff before we open it up? Hey, hearing none. We will open this up for public comments. I believe we've had a communication from Mr. Schenk at an adjacent property on El Salto. So if there's someone wishing to speak, now's the time. Raise your hand, let us know that you're there, please.
We do have a public comment request, and it is from Mr. John Schenk, so I'm going to...
Okay, Mr. Schenk, go ahead.
Wonderful, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you very much. And I did submit kind of a detailed memo. I'm hoping you have a chance to peek at it. I think, you know, just to summarize, our main issue is that this structure, and as Mr. Wilk was asking, you know, on the setback and conforming or not conforming, this, this wall, which is a first-floor element, and I would call it a four-foot parapet wall on the second floor, is where I look at the second-floor component as being second floor. I mean, this is going to be a second-floor roof deck. And that second floor is four feet, it's not setback the extra two feet, the extra 50%. It's all at the four-foot level. And by, if this were to happen, and activating this large roof deck on the side yard, at the midpoint of the side yard, it puts it squarely right in our backyard and four feet away. And I, and it's that issue that I think just makes this inappropriate. I did go back and read a bunch of the notes and comments and staff reports to council during the many years of discussion on the zoning change here. And it's, it was really clear that the side yard was the, where they had concerns about relieving the uncovered deck from being counted as FAR. The front seemed almost like it would be fine, et cetera, which is why we're at this review, because it's the side yard. And in this circumstance, being right on the property line, midpoint, it's, it's very intrusive. And I don't think that was the intent of allowing people to add a deck or a balcony and have it not included in the FAR. It's not supposed to have these kinds of impacts. I'm grateful that my neighbor, you know, I'll say attempted to address it by adding a glass wall on top of this wall that's already too tall and too close to the property line. And the, but I just, it's, it just makes it more impactful. It's more shadow, it's more glare, it's more structure right on the property line. And then, as we can imagine, it becomes activated, right? A roof deck, balcony, you know, people are outside. You get, I would imagine, I would hope there'd be restrictions, there's nothing addressed in here, but I could, you know, I could imagine umbrellas and heaters and, which are lights effectively, all these things literally right up there on top of our kitchen and backyard. And again, I just don't believe, it's up to you guys to interpret, obviously, but I didn't find anything that led me to believe this was the intent of this allowance for added structure. And there's a point made, I tried to add some comments to the, a few of the slides that were in the, in the packet here. But, you know, there's points that there's all these, you know, other second-floor roof decks and balconies in the neighborhood. And there are many, but those obviously happened in the past, compliant with code then, which meant the building wasn't as big. It wasn't maxed out on FAR. The overall impact was such that it was then permitted. And the vast majority are on the front yard or the backyard, or face, you know, the impact is on the public street, not midpoint of a lot on top of somebody's backyard. And it's really, I think, you know, that's where, and I looked through and, you know, I'm not as technical as staff, clearly, who's, who's, you know, I, but I just looked at the findings and these things, and I thought, I don't know how you say this second-floor wall is compliant with the R1 zoning, because it's four feet from the, I mean, if it was a one-story element the first time around, and this was a few years ago, and I brought up this issue of its impact, just the structure and its impact on our property, and I was told that it's not a roof deck, it's not an anything, it is, it's just a, you know, it's a parapet wall, and it, that's all that it is. Well, now it's a roof deck, so it's a second floor. And a second floor, it's anyway, it's just, I don't know how we can say it's compliant with the zoning code, because, well, I don't think that it is. And then, all these words around not impactful, or just, you know, all these things around design review is intended to obviously have a very subjective element, but be, it seems like, how many times it says to be wary of not impacting neighbors? And you guys can imagine, sitting in your, in your own backyards and 10, 15 feet in the air, four feet away, on a house that's already maximized in terms of its FAR, and has multiple other exceptions, the setbacks on the back, and no parking, and those kinds of things, that this would just be yet another impact on us. And I love roof decks, I love being outdoors, I, all those things are wonderful. If this were on the front of the property, I would have no issues. If it were on the back, now I don't want to put it on because it was some other neighbor, but being midpoint of our lot on top of our private space, it's, it's too big of an impact to just say it's, it's not. You know, that it complies and all of these things, all these different findings. And so I, my thought was, you know, if this were to proceed, it would be, if I were, you know, wanting to, if I were the applicant and wanting to do this, I would figure, I would, you know, I don't think it would be unreasonable to move that wall back, set it back, to make it compliant with zoning. And then, there's the consideration of, do we allow the roof deck there? And then, there would be some conditions, whether it's, and I wouldn't do a clear glass because that doesn't help with the privacy component, mid-side yard, but maybe it's a frosted glass, or it could be some other material or something to retain some privacy. My bedroom window is not far from this second-floor deck area. And then, down below, as I say, is a kitchen on one side, and the other side, it's a kitchen and a bathroom. And anyway, some, to retain the privacy would be important. And then, I do think, thinking about whether, you know, it's for this case, but for others, are there any restrictions on the use? Could you put, well, it's not covered, so it doesn't count as FAR, but could somebody put a big, you know, those big tent structures? Or big, huge umbrellas up there, and a heater and light, you know, there's umbrellas with lights on them, or whatever it is, all these things that we're fearful of that would add to impacts. And there don't seem to be any conditions there, nor are there, it sounds like there will be no decking or anything, it's just, they're going to have a roof deck literally on their roof. And that's great, if they're going to do it. Typically, people put down some, some sort of material, a decking, or something, which then raises the height, and that would need to be taken into consideration from a privacy perspective for the height of any treatments that were, that were added to the exterior edges. But again, I just think this structure is too close and right out of the chute. The second floor is already too close. And then, to add to it by activating it and such, it's just too much. And I'm happy to answer questions or talk about other ideas about maybe how to move forward, but I, fundamentally, that's my, that's my big issue.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schenk. Yeah, now's the time to make your best case, because typically, we don't come back to allow people to engage in a dialogue with the, with the commission once we end the public portion. So if you've made your best case now, we're going to ask if there's any other public comments for people wishing to speak on this item. Sean, do we have any other hands raised?
I do not see any other hands raised at this time.
And there's no new emails either.
The owner is present, but I do not see their hand raised.
Okay, well, then we will bring it back to the commission for discussion and whatever action the commission chooses to take. Who would care to lead off on this?
I would, this is Commissioner Westman. I would be happy to start because I was involved when the project was originally approved.
Go ahead.
Okay. And I think perhaps Commissioner Newman was also on the Planning Commission at the time that this came to us. And it was quite clearly indicated to the commission at that time that this area was not going to be a deck and was never going to be a deck. In fact, the Planning Commission, I think, included a condition that they changed the window that they now want to convert to a door, so it would be obvious that there wouldn't be any access to this outdoor space. And I understand that some of the regulations have now changed, and that's the reason they're coming back. But for me to be able to vote in favor of it, I would almost ask that we continue this item for one month to see if the two neighbors can work out some sort of agreement that works for both of them, because, you know, it's hard for me to approve a second-story deck like this that's clearly going to have such impact on the neighbor next door. So I'd like to see them have some time to work it out, rather than the Planning Commission try and design solutions for them, and then they could come back, and I guess we could find solutions if they haven't been able to. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Susan.
Question for Commissioner Westman?
Yes.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Wilk. I was curious about the approval of the four-foot wall on the second story. When this came around the first time, was there any discussion as to why they would want to enclose the roof with a four-foot parapet wall that wasn't compliant with a six-foot setback?
They indicate, my recollection is, and I'm going back several years, and perhaps staff could look up the minutes, but my recollection is that we were assured that that was just an architectural feature that they wanted to have, because this area was never going to be used as a deck itself. And as I said, we, we were, we voted on it on the basis that it would never be used as a deck. And maybe Commissioner Newman remembers other things that I'm not remembering, but I believe we were both there.
Thank you.
Commissioner Newman, do you have any insight to add?
Well, apparently, the recusal rules have changed because I'm told that I'm recused on this item now. So I better abide by that.
Okay, thank you for that. Katie, do you have any, or not Katie, but Courtney, I'm sorry, do you have anything to add? Courtney?
Hi, okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Sorry, okay. I just wanted to see the aerial view of the adjacent property again. I see, okay. So I think my overall question is, there, there isn't anything prohibiting them from having that second-story deck, I mean, the roof deck there? Sean, or Katie? Can you hear me?
It requires a design permit.
Right.
Well, question, it sounds like it requires a variance because the wall is, the second-story parapet wall, the four-foot wall, is, doesn't have the six-foot setback. Now, they tried to mollify that requirement by adding a railing that is invisible, so hence, could be ignored or taken down without anybody seeing. But effectively, what has happened is they have this four-foot, they have a second-story wall that is not a decorative feature anymore. It is now a roof deck wall that doesn't have a six-foot setback. And I would be curious to know what the rationale from staff is for that.
I agree.
Okay. Yeah, I was, I was out there today and looked at the, looked at the site from both Saxon Avenue and El Salto, in fact, through Mr. Schenk's backyard. And actually, I went across the street to get a, on someone's front porch, to get a higher elevation so I could look and see. And it's definitely intrusive. I just can't imagine that, that this is something that the commission would want to approve, because it basically destroys the privacy, not only Mr. Schenk's backyard, but the neighborhood also, I believe it's 205 El Salto. So, you know, my experience has been, I had one of these in my neighbor directly to my south, but he had a five-and-a-half-foot wall along his deck. And I know we've done that in at least one other case to protect privacy. But in its current configuration, I just, I can't support the way it is. So Katie, I know Mr. Wilk's asked you a question regarding the, the need for a variance, if you could respond to that?
Yes, so I was trying to go back to the 2017 approval, but I apologize, I don't have enough time to look it up. And, but I'm almost certain that it was considered part of the roof. And that's why, the roof for the first story, and that's why it was compliant at the four feet. If they had built a second story there, or if this had been designed as a deck, if they came in with a proposal today, we would have them, they'd be required to meet this six, you know, six-foot setback. In our review, we did think that by putting that divider, an additional two feet in the fence, that that would bring this into compliance, because they, it would still be that roof element, but with the new wall. And maybe that's how we could deal with it, instead of like a fence creating a second wall there. But that is how we were looking at it, that it wouldn't need a variance. how we were looking at it, that it wouldn't need a variance because that is part of the like parapet wall, parapet roof for the structure for the first story. And then by building that new wall, they're meeting the intent of the zoning code of not, you know, having the second story deck within six feet of that property line. So that is why we didn't require a variance on them.
Thank you, Katie. Mr. Wilk?
Well, it, it, I guess, i- it's a fine point, I guess. I mean, the, uh, you're saying that the last two feet, uh, complied with the original, um, original agreement by the planning commission that, oh, it's a, it's a design feature only. Um, and, uh, and the deck now, because it has this fence, uh, is, is the only part we have to worry about. I just, to me, yeah, I, so I could see why you, you, you know, agreed that it did need a variance, but man, I tell you, it sure seems like, um, that's really playing games. So, I don't know, I, this is a tough one for me.
Yeah. Well, if, if I'm reading the, the commission right, it, it kinda sounds like if a vote were taken, it may fail. And Commissioner, uh, Westman has suggested we continue this to see if the neighbors can work out an agreement, uh, that's probably in the best interest of the property owner because it doesn't sound like he's going to get what he wants if we took a vote tonight. So what's the pleasure of the commission? Would you like to vote on it or would you like to continue it in hopes that the two property owners can reach an agreement?
I would motion, can I make a motion?
Yeah, go ahead, Courtney.
I'd like to motion to, um, uh, based on Commissioner Westman's suggestion of continuing this application.
And I will second, yeah. This is Commissioner Westman, I'll second it.
Okay, all right. Any discussion on the motion before we call for the vote? Very none then. Chloe, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Christensen.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
I'm saying.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Commissioner Westman.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilk.
Aye.
And Chair Ruth.
Aye. So this item will be continued until staff brings it back to the commission. Okay, that brings us to our public hearings tonight. We have three of them tonight. Our first public hearing is 111 Capitola Avenue. Uh, this is the, uh, English Ale House, uh, requesting a change in their alcohol sales to include beer and wine. Katie, gone?
Yes, this is, uh, my item this evening. Sean, I'll need you to, um, allow me to share the screen or to turn off your screen so that I can share mine. Stop sharing. Thank you. Okay. Good evening, planning commissioners. Uh, before you tonight is an application at 111 Capitola Avenue. This is an amendment to a conditional use permit for English Ale, um, who is located within the mixed use village zoning district. Are you seeing my screen okay?
Yes.
Okay. Um, English Ale's brewery received a conditional use permit back in December of 2019. Their CUP was very specific that it was for an alcohol sales type 23 small beer manufacturer license from the, um, Department of Alcoholics Beverage Control, um, for onsite beer consumption, tasting and sales. So with that permit is for, English Ale's is a brewery and they're allowed to have satellite brewery tasting room, so it was just for beer. Um, this, one of the conditions on the permit, that it was very specific in the approval limiting the establishment to that type 23 license. Um, and any modification to that license would have to come back to the planning commission for review. It was in that condition. So the current request before you this evening is to amend the CUP to modify the license to a type 42 beer and wine license. And this is so they can offer their guests, um, a variety, uh, rather than to offer wine in addition to beer. Um, when looking at a conditional use permit, the planning commission must consider characteristics of the proposed use, operating characteristics, um, if there's available and adequate public services and infrastructure, potential impacts to the natural environment and the physical suitability of the site for the proposed use. Also, the planning commission has the ability to attach conditions, um, to make sure that the application is consistent with the general plan, our local coastal program, as well as our zoning code and any specific plan. So in our review, this went before, um, now Chief Daly, or almost seemed to be Chief Daly, he was interim at the time. Um, and he reviewed this application and saw no new impacts, um, regarding this proposal and provided a letter of support. And staff in our review also did not find any new impact from adding, uh, wine to the allowed sales at 111 Capitola Avenue. So our recommendation this evening is for planning commission to approve the amendment to the CUP based on the conditions of approval and findings. With that, I'm gonna go over questions.
Thank you, Katie, any questions?
Oh.
Mr. Westman?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay.
I have a comment.
Courtney?
I just wanted to say that I really think that this, this little establishment in their business has been a really great contribution to that stretch of street.
Thank you, Courtney. Okay, so there's no further comments, then we'll open up the public portion of this. Is there anyone in the public wishing to speak to this item?
I believe the owner is on the meeting this evening. Sean, maybe if you open it up for him to speak if you'd like to, I'm not sure if he...
Mr. Blackwell, are you there?
Um, and Sean, are you able to unmute him? Sean, are you unable, able to unmute?
Oh, sorry about that, my, my mic was muted. Yes, I did just unmute, uh, mute him so he can unmute his own mic and, and speak if he wishes. I, I don't see his hand up, however.
Okay, well, we'll continue then and bring it back to the commission for act...
It shows his mic muted, actually, on my screen.
Yeah, mine too.
Yep, Peter, if you press your spacebar, you should be able to, we should be able to hear you.
Yeah, nothing seems to be happening, so let's continue. So bring it back to the commission. Any concerns, questions for staff on this item?
No.
I have a, a general concern, it just kinda popped in my mind. You know, we, we have a lot of, uh, concerns about noise and, uh, unruliness by the surrounding neighborhood and, and yet we continue to, uh, allow liquor licenses and more wineries and more bars inside the mercantile on now on Capitola Avenue. I'm just wondering, and, and I have no objection to this, but I'm just wondering, would, do we wanna, will we continue to do that? Is that something we really want in terms of how our community is, and the village is growing? Um, just kinda random thought that just made me, I don't think if there's any reason why I would ever wanna not approve this and that, that would be a consideration, but, but no, I don't have any objection to this.
Uh, I, I actually have the same concern and while I'm not going to vote against this particular application tonight, um...
Good for her.
Yeah, she froze up. Well, you know, you can't walk more than 200 feet in the village without stopping to have a drink at some place that's available, so. We'll bring it back to the commission for a vote then. Is there a motion to approve or deny the application?
I think we should allow Susan to finish her comments if she can get that one.
It was my understanding that...
There she is.
Hi, Susan. Now, now you're muted.
Okay.
There you go.
Anyway, I just would like to later on have staff sort of come back...
Susan, I would suggest, uh, turn off your video and then hopefully we'll be able to hear you, sometimes that helps.
To us and tell us where we stand. Yeah, you, you can just ignore me, it's okay. I'm gonna go find what's going on. I think I know the problem.
Okay, well, we hope you can...
You don't know what I want.
... another on this, Susan. So is there a motion to approve or deny? Do we have a motion?
I will so move. I move approval. This is Commissioner Wilk.
Okay, do you have a sec?
I'll second.
Hey, we have a motion and second then. Chloe, may I have the roll call, please?
Now she's muted.
Oh.
Chloe, are you available for roll call?
Hi, I'm so sorry, I shouldn't, I did not mute myself, so I don't know what happened. Commissioner Christensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Commissioner Westman, are you back?
Aye.
Great.
I'm back.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Wilk?
Aye.
Chair Ruth?
Aye.
Great.
Motion carries and, uh, the English Ale Tasting Room now be able to serve wine along with their beer. Mr., uh, Blackwell, I see you have your hand up, but you got what you wanted, so we're going to be moving on to item B, 1500 Warf Road. This is, uh, an application for a sign program on the walkways and gates at Venetian Courts.
Sean, um, you're muted.
Thank you. The application for you is a master sign program for information and directional signage for the Venetian Court condominiums located at 1500 Warf Road. The application includes a coastal development permit, uh, both of which require planning commission approval. The Venetian Court comprises a group of separately owned condominiums located between Stockton Bridge and the Capitol Warf. This is also the site of the Venetian Hotel, which is a separate entity, uh, with its own signage. This is the site plan with the proposed and existing signs blown up for more visibility. Signage would be located along the seaward pathway and down the central passage. triangles represent the existing gateway signs and circles represent the proposed freestanding signs. The seven in all. This is the proposed freestanding sign style. Four of these signs would be placed along the pathways. Each pathway sign would contain identical text and measures 18 inches wide by 18 inches These are photos of the existing signs on the gateways. One sign is mounted on each of the three primary entrances. Proposed sign program specifies a maximum sign width and height of 18 inches. However, the existing gateway signs are 16 and a half inches wide and tall. Venetian Court pathways have been identified within the Capitol Land Use Plan as providing beach, public beach access. The implementation, oh, sorry. Implementation Policy 11 for Venetian, the Venetian Court area directs the city to maintain existing public access along the pathways. The proposed signage includes specific language that identifies both private property as well as beach access. Further and future alterations to the number of signs or sign content would be subject to permit amendment by the planning commission. With that, staff recommends the planning commission approve the project based on conditions of approval and findings.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Any questions for staff before we open it to the public? Hey, here and now, now's the time for any member of the public to address this item. Proposed signs prohibiting certain uses on the Venetian Court walkway and seawall. So now's the time to speak.
We, we did receive, um, an email on this, a letter. I can put read aloud on if you can, if you'd like.
Yeah, could you please, Katie?
Okay. Um, and Sean, if you don't mind, stop sharing your screen and I'll share. Okay.
November 5th, 2021. City of Capitola Planning Commission, 420 Capitola Avenue, Capitola, California, 95010. Subject: 1500 Warf Road hashtag 21-0287 APN, common walkways B through H. Dear Planning Commissioners Nick Ralph, Courtney Christensen, Ed Newman, TJ Welch, and Peter Wilk. I am writing to ask for your support and approval for the new signage requested for the Capitola Venetian condominiums. The new signage will provide benefits for the owners, public, and the City of Capitola by educating visitors who are unaware that these are private homes. I have listed the benefits to each of those groups below. Benefit to owners, the number of visitors to the Venetians has increased dramatically in recent years as they have been highlighted on visitor maps, Google, and Twitter. Most visitors are respectful and polite, but a growing number are climbing and sitting on the beach houses to try and get a better photo than their friends or others who have posted previously on social media. Climbing on the beach homes causes the sucker ledges to crack cause of water damage. Educating the public that these are private homes, not part of the hotel or City of Capitola, will help reduce some of this behavior. Benefit to public, educating the public will give visitors the information they need to act appropriately when they are visiting the Venetians. Most people will behave appropriately if given adequate information. The goal in educating the public is to let them know that they are welcome to access the beach, but that these are private homes and to please respect the owners or renters using them. It will help avoid conflicts with the owners and make everyone's time in Capitola more enjoyable. Benefit to City of Capitola's social media is drawing a greater number of visitors to the Venetians and the Capitola Village. In most cases, the owners politely ask those climbing on the homes, stairs, and even roofs of the Venetian homes to please respect their homes. Unfortunately, some visitors do not comply and still behave inappropriately. They believe this is public property and they can do as they please. This is when the police become involved, which takes up their valuable time and resources. With proper signage, you could at least point to the signs and show that although there is beach access, these are not public property and are privately owned. My Venetian beach house has been in my family for over 50 years and I realize how fortunate I am to be able to own one. how fortunate I am to be able to own one. I grew up in Capitola and later graduated from Applus High School. My wife and I live at our Venetian beach house most of the time from September through May each year now. I am asking for your help in educating the public and visitors so that you can make our time and their time in Capitola more enjoyable. Sincerely, Michael Newell, 1500 Wharf Road Number 4, Capitola, California.
Okay, so that, that was the one letter we received, is an email. And I'm not seeing any hands raised. Craig Nunes is available. Oh, his hand is raised. Don, can you provide him access?
Hello? Can you all hear me?
Yeah, Mr. Nunes, go ahead.
Great. Hi, nice to meet you all. As Katie mentioned, my name's Craig Nunes. I'm here in my capacity as the HOA president for the Venetian Court residences. And I'm also a board member for the Capitola Village and Wharf Business Improvement Association. And in fact, a couple of our other Venetian Court residents, Janelle Cox and Mike Gardner, are on that board as well. In our BIA role, the importance of bringing visitors to our merchants and dining establishments and hotels can't be understated. However, the substantial increase in visitors to the village, that's had a kind of an unintended consequence on our Venetian Court residences. And so the application before you aims at kind of coexistence of that continued growth of visitors to the village. It's good for our shop owners and dining establishment owners, but consider sort of the safety and security of our residents. The application in front of you comes from 22 homeowners in the Venetian Court, and that was put together in partnership with the City of Capitola and the California Coastal Commission. The reason we kind of took this sort of shared approach, I don't know if that's normal or not, but we felt it a requirement, is the Venetian Court residences, they're a historic landmark, a central part of the city's identity. The need for our joint relationship is particularly evident when you do an online search on Capitola. What you see on Google is not images of Capitola Beach or the Espinade. Nine out of 10 images are of our colorful homes. The, you know, we are codependent and extricably bound to each other, and we think that's, you know, a good thing. And along those lines, we've partnered with the city planning department on the development of this application. Beyond the City of Capitola, we know that because of our proximity, the Coastal Commission, they also have a really important objective to preserve public access for all California beaches, including our most favorite one in our backyard. And again, given our location, our residents, you know, kind of become ambassadors for, you know, this clean and safe beach. And, and we know we have an important stakeholder in the Coastal Commission. And, you know, thanks to the help of the, the planning department, we're able to include them in the development of, of this proposal. I, I put together kind of the challenges that we face as residents in... Oh, no. That doesn't sound good. The, I, I put the challenges that we have kind of run into in a PowerPoint presentation in the materials. A couple of points is, in 2020 and early part of 2021, there were 72 911 calls involving our address. And I can tell you from firsthand experience, that the majority of disturbances from our residents go unreported, except occasionally to me, despite our encouragement to, to do otherwise. We, we have been subject to theft, vandalism, graffiti, trespassing on porches, balconies, and roofs, as you heard from Mike, late night partying, intoxication. I've seen the police deal with drug overdoses not 20 feet from my home. My wife will not stay here if I'm not in town, and she's not the only one. This is not the, you know, the happy Capitola Village we all know and love, but sadly, it's, you know, part of our lives here at Venetian Court residences. Currently, there is no real visible signage within the Venetian Court. There are the gate signs at the perimeter. And so there's, you know, really been no way to inform the public about our own safety and security requirements. And we, we think if we can appropriately inform them, most people come through here just awesome, and we think they would comply. The, the benefits of the, the signage that we put together, it, it just helps people understand they're 100% welcome to walk through the, the patios and climb over the wall to the beach. It advises them, just like the beach, there's no smoking here. And, and also like a lot of our city sidewalks, and for the safety of our residents, their kids, and their pets, the signage would also state there are no bikes, skateboard, scooters, and skating allowed. And finally, it explains to beachgoers that they should, you know, make their way to the beach rather than gathering, obstructing, you know, our patio through the seawall, both for our residents as well as, you know, others trying to, trying to make their way to the beach. So like I said at the beginning, you know, it's vital for us to draw people into town for the health of our business owners. And as Mike mentioned, with social media and the BIA marketing efforts, which have been super good, the influx has grown significantly over the last half dozen years, with our private homes being one of the main attractions. And, you know, in some ways, that's cool if we can manage it. Our application for the fourth sign, signs around our homes is kind of our best attempt to balance, you know, the ever-growing visitors to the village with our need for safety and security around our homes. So I probably went longer than three minutes. Sorry, but thanks for your time this evening and consideration of our application and continued partnership on this.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Nunes. Before you leave, I, I do have a question.
Sure, please.
It's my understanding that the 70 police calls have originated from only one or two residents. Can you confirm that? Is that accurate?
That is not accurate. It, it comes from a variety of, of locations. If you look on the police report, you can see it's anything from, you know, kind of traffic altercations and, and residents who've complained about, you know, public drunkenness and the like. So it's, it's all over the map, and it's really kind of our little community here, not from a, a single location.
Okay. And just, I have one other question.
Yeah.
The majority of those places down there serve as summer rentals? You know, typically, they set up their gear on the walkway. They set up their chairs. They might set up a little barbecue.
Yeah.
So the Venetian Court Homeowners Association and the owners of those summer rentals want to prohibit that kind of activity?
No, the, so those, those are our patios, and so they're for use of the residents. We coach the residents that they should not be blocking access to the beach because we've got to abide by that. And so I've had to walk around, you know, and kind of, you know, make sure people are not getting too comfortable in setting up their, their chairs on the patios and blocking, you know, people who are passing through and trying to get to the beach.
Okay. How do you differentiate the walkway and the patio, since it's all one estate?
Yeah. The, the patio is kind of what is from our house to the seawall, and we need to ensure that there is ample room for folks to pass along the, the full length of the walkway. You can hop over the wall at any point, but it's, you know, I think it's in our best interest to make sure that folks can get to where they're trying to get to without any of those altercations that Mike mentioned.
Okay. I think I disagree with you on that point, that the walk, the entire walkway is your patio. Are there any other questions for Mr. Nunes? If not, then Mr. Nunes, thank you. We're gonna continue the public portion here, see if there's anybody else wishing to speak. Do we have any other people wishing to make comments, Sean or Katie?
I do not see any more hands raised in Zoom, and I'm gonna check the public email again. And there are no new comments on public email.
Okay, thank you, Katie. Okay, with that, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Who would care to lead off?
Hi, this is Commissioner Westman. I will, if no one else wants to go first.
Go ahead, Susan.
Um, I agree with you that I don't think the walkway is a patio area. I think the walkway and the wall have always been used by the public quite freely to get access to the beach. And I would be supportive of their sign plan and proposals if we made a couple minor word modifications. And on their proposal where they say, "Do not sit, stop, loiter, or obstruct patio slash wall," I think the patio slash wall should be stricken and just say the pathway, because I don't think we want to create the impression that the walkway itself is actually pri, people's private patio. So I would vote for it if we could make that minor word change.
Other comments? Courtney, is that your hand up? No. Kate, no other comments? I, I have a comment. And one of the things, in looking at the staff report, the Coastal Commission's recommended language is slightly different than the applicant's proposal. And the Coastal Commission doesn't include the seawall. And, you know, I've lived in this town, getting closer to 60 years now. Sitting on that seawall has always been something people have been allowed to do. So I would certainly not vote for this if we prohibited people sitting on the seawall. I can give you an example of how this can be abused. Is that my son and two granddaughters, ages 10 and 12 at the time, in the wintertime, sat on the seawall and were asked to move with nobody else around. So I think if we include that in there, this, this language can definitely be abused, and I, I think it can be utilized to discourage people from using that walkway and sitting on the seawall. So without that change, I definitely can't support this sign program.
Okay, so could you sort of repeat the language that you want, you want to have?
I think the Coastal Commission language in the staff report is sufficient. It doesn't mention anything about prohibiting sitting on the seawall.
That, that would work for me. The Coastal Commission's language.
Commissioner Wilk, I'd be very interested to hear Mr. Nunes's response to that change, to see if he has any rational argument against it.
Is there a consensus to open up the public portion again?
I don't yet.
Okay. Susan, would you like to try a motion?
Uh, yeah. I, I will make a motion that we approve the sign program, but use the language suggested by the Coastal Commission.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Hey, we have a motion to approve it with the language that's been suggested in the staff report by the Coastal Commission. We have the roll call, please, Chloe?
Yes. Council, Commissioner Christensen?
Hi.
Commissioner Newman?
Oh, I, I am recused again, but in this case, it's not because I lived in unit 21 at one time. That was, that was before social media, and I think it was before there was any media.
Okay. Commissioner Westman?
Hi.
Commissioner Wilk?
Hi.
And Chair Ruth?
Hi. Okay, motion carries with that amended language then. Okay, that brings us to item C, which is the outdoor dining ordinance. So tonight, we do have Katie's presentation. Katie has proposed several questions within her proposal, and probably best if we take those questions after she gives her presentation and we hear from the public, and then we can respond to those questions that she's proposed in her written presentation to us. So Katie?
Thank you. Chair Ruth, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Yes, I'm gonna go over the presentation, and there are quite a few questions. So I, I appreciate that we'll get our public comment in first and then return to those questions. So tonight, we're looking at a draft ordinance for outdoor dining. I do want to mention that you've received quite a few emails today that I understand all the planning commissioners received in advance and were able to read through. Okay, quick history here. In spring of 2020, the city council emergency order went into effect, which permitted temporary COVID-19 outdoor use permits, and that's what's continuing to happen through. Those are set to expire on January 3rd, 2022. Last April, the city council directed staff to develop a program for a permanent outdoor dining program. On June 24th of this year, the city council reviewed survey results from both the public and the businesses in the village. Included that in your packet tonight. In, in those results, we saw there was public support for a permanent program. There was support from not only a lot of Capitola residents, but as well as many village residents. And there was also feedback from the businesses that they would like to, some of the businesses that they would like to be involved in a future program. So taking in that information, on July 22nd, the council provided direction on some key program elements. And the, the first time planning commission got to review this, we, we published a draft ordinance in early October, and the planning commission took their first review of this on October 7th. At that hearing, planning commission was very clear that they would like staff to put out more notice than is required for your typical ordinance. So we, at that point, we mailed out postcards to every resident within the Central Village zoning district, and we placed public notices around the village and on the majority of the existing outdoor dining. And I think it's been effective, because whenever I walk through the village, I seem to get a comment or two from businesses. So, and the planning commission continued this to tonight. Tonight, I'm going to go over the ordinance, the major changes that have taken place since we first looked at this in October. I will try to be quick, because there's quite a few items attached to this. So the first is the location. There's both sidewalk dining proposed in the ordinance as well as a street dining deck. So sidewalk dining is limited in the mixed-use neighborhood zone, mixed-use village zone, community commercial, and regional commercial. Within the mixed-use village, currently, the streets are limited to Monterey Avenue and Capitola Wharf. And this evening, I'll be looking for direction to see if you would like to modify the proposed location for the sidewalk dining and include any other streets or areas. Second is the location of the street dining decks. The street dining decks are only allowed within the mixed-use village. To be clear, dining decks within private plazas and private property could come forward, but they would have to be through a conditional, an amendment to their conditional use permit. So only within the public streets are they allowed in the mixed-use village. And the streets are limited to Espinade, Monterey Avenue, and San Jose Avenue. And originally, the ordinance included Capitola Avenue, and at our last meeting, the planning commission, it was suggested to remove Capitola Avenue. Right now, we have that struck, struck through. And I just wanted to be clear, there was some public comment made about lawnway, and that is correct, that that is in our village residential overlay. And it was, we allowed that under the COVID temporary use permit. That would not be allowed as this ordinance is drafted today. The lawnway area would not be allowed as a right-of-way. It is right-of-way, and it would not be allowed for use for outdoor dining. It is right-of-way, and it would not be allowed for use for outdoor dining. For the maximum number of on-street parking spaces, there is a cap of 25 spaces. And I just wanted to introduce the idea of the prototype design for anyone that's listening in for the first time tonight. The City Council, during the earlier review, we talked about creating a prototype that will work with a local architect, designer, and create a prototype that's been vetted by the city and paid for by the city, that once the Planning Commission would approve this design, we'd bring it forth for preliminary review to get comments from the Planning Commission, and eventually have a blanket coastal development permit for the prototype design. But it would be available, once it's approved, it would be available to any business that opts into the outdoor dining program to utilize. And with the, the intent here is to save the business of money and as well as create a very nice design that will fit within our community. So, and anyone opting into the prototype design, it would be an administrative review rather than a Planning Commission review for a custom design deck. So that's what the prototype design, an explanation of it, because I do talk about it quite frequently. So in this first slide here, the administrative permit would be for prototype street dining decks. It would not have to go before Planning Commission. It would fit under this blanket Coastal Commission permit. A design permit would be required for sidewalk dining areas and also custom street dining decks. And one question I had during the last meeting, the Planning Commission made the change of the sidewalk dining areas who are directed, should be included under required Planning Commission review. And I wanted some feedback this evening, if that is only in the mixed-use village, or would you allow sidewalk dining areas to be approved administratively in, say, the community commercial zoning district or mixed-use neighborhood? So I'll be asking that later. And as I just explained, within the prototype design, there is, in talking with the Coastal Commission, they would support a blanket coastal development permit for those. So once the design is created, we would bring this to the Planning Commission for approval of a coastal development permit, and it would be applied to all properties in the coastal zone. And any restaurant could opt to utilize the prototype design and move forward with a building permit application. Another modification we made to the code since October was, we were given feedback that the fourth requirement for a design permit, to use high-quality durable materials that can withstand inclement weather, was very subjective. And there is a preference to have more objective standards. So we added a new criteria for, within this sign, that says, "Allow materials include finished or painted wood, glass, ornamental steel or iron, and decorative masonry. Street dining decks where the primary visible material is plastic, fabric, woven bamboo, or chain-link wire fencing are not allowed." So I'll be looking for a direction on that this evening, and if there are any other materials you would like to specifically allow or prohibit. Next, within the ordinance, there's a requirement for good standing. And so anyone that wants to opt into this, we would do some research and make sure that there have been no code violations or abatement issues in the last 24 months. And another item you'll see within the draft ordinance is that there is a use, for the permit fees in the coastal zone, the ordinance states that "For sidewalk dining and street dining decks in the coastal zone, the city shall utilize no less than 50% of permit fees received for coastal access programs, maintenance, and improvement." So those fees that come in for utilizing the parking spaces, 50% of those fees will have to be programmed towards coastal access programs, maintenance, and improvement. That was a request from the Coastal Commission. And now I'm going to go over our operational and development standards. There were quite a few requests for modifications and additional items within this when we met in October. So these first items have been here since October. The minimum sidewalk width for the sidewalk dining is five feet throughout the village and then four feet in other zoning districts. There is a limit on the location to the eating establishment frontage. And then if they want to extend beyond that frontage, it has to be approved by the permit grantor. And then a program, it's limited to eating establishments, so only eating establishments could opt in. And then there's a maximum hours of operation are from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Some changes that have happened, the standards for sidewalk dining areas. We limited the area to tables and chairs. And then also stated that design elements that are required for ABC permits to comply with the separation, such as fences, rots, and planters, may be included in the design but shall not exceed 36 inches in height. Signs, previously, we just, in the first draft of the ordinance, we had a reference to our sign section of the code, and we were asked for more specificity. We added an allowance for one informational sign that could be up to two square feet. You see quite a few of these on the existing temporary decks that are out there. And this will be limited to two square feet and must be informational with a message such as "Watch your step" or "For paying customers only," and we're looking for feedback on that tonight. Stormwater, this is a new standard that we added, that the dining deck shall not block the drainage flow along the gutter line or access into any drainage inlet or other drainage/stormwater facility. The utilities, the updated ordinance requires that the outdoor dining not interfere with utility boxes, water hydrants, storm drains, and all other related facilities. There's new standards for trash and maintenance, that trash is picked up and properly disposed of, flower boxes and planters contain live, healthy vegetation, and that all tables, chairs, and equipment and structures are kept clean and operational. Sound, we were given direction at the last meeting. In the prior draft, we said that it prohibited amplified sound, including amplified music. It's been updated to prohibit amplified sound and all music. And then for bicycle parking, there was quite a bit of discussion on that during the October meeting. Right now, as drafted, the ordinance requires two bicycle parking spaces for each parking space that is removed. And then the updated ordinance includes an alternative to pay an in-luffy towards a central bicycle parking location in the village. We're extremely limited in areas for bicycle parking in the village. So if we were to create this in-luffy, it would likely be going towards the removal of a couple more parking spaces to create space for bicycle parking, because we are that limited in our opportunities within the village. So I'll be asking for direction from Planning Commission tonight if they would support an in-luffy towards a central bicycle parking location within the village. And activation, we added a new standard for outdoor dining shall be open for use a minimum of five days a week, except in cases of inclement weather. So that's just to make sure that the spaces are activated midweek and not just limited to the weekend. And we also modified the enforcement. We really want to make sure that enforcement can be done expediently. And we modified this, that it would be subject to the lease agreement and the encroachment agreement. And that way, we can work through our administrative policy and first give warnings, then tack on fees, and then have the ability to revoke and encroach the lease and revocable encroachment permit. The Coastal Commission has reviewed our ordinance and has given us, they provided red lines, which are in the draft ordinance. They asked us to reduce the amount of spaces from what was originally under the COVID-19 permits, which we've done with the 25. Originally, we had more than 50 spaces used for the temporary permit. They requested that the program be temporary so that we can do a review within one to five years to make sure that the program is operating within our local coastal program. And then they also, as I mentioned previously, asked that funds from this program from parking spaces be utilized towards reinvested into coastal access. So that concludes all the overview and the changes that have taken place. So at this evening's meeting, we're looking for a Planning Commission recommendation. The next steps, if we get a recommendation this evening to move forward, I will take this to City Council for a first reading on November 23, followed by a second reading on December 9. And then we would submit the ordinance to the Coastal Commission in December. It takes a couple weeks to put everything together. And they get 60 working days in which to take this to a hearing and for final action. So I would think that if all goes perfectly, we get that approval by March. And then concurrently, while we're moving forward with the ordinance, we'll be working on our prototype design. Right now, we have two architects putting together proposals for us. And I think that we could have something in front of the Planning Commission, possibly in January, but definitely by February. And then for the first review of the informal draft. And then once we have our Coastal Commission adoption of the ordinance, we could move forward with the blanket coastal development permit review of a sign by the Planning Commission. And then once we have that blanket CDP, we could post the lottery for spaces. So also published, along with the ordinance, is our administrative policy. So because this is on the dining decks and sidewalk dining areas are on city property, there's administration that goes along with that in terms of the lease and how we will manage that right-of-way. So our administrative policy really provides the guidance for that. I won't go over everything in the administrative policy. I just tried to highlight what is different, or just those items that are not within the ordinance. So the size limitation of five parking spaces or 900 square feet per restaurant, that outlines the process for the lottery. And it also has the details of the revocable encroachment permit, including the deposits, the insurance, no subletting, I think that was a question that came up last time, violation signs, revocation, and construction timing. So with that, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission review the draft ordinance and recommend approval of the ordinance to the City Council as amended. And I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Katie. Are there any questions for Katie at this time?
I did. I had a question.
Yeah, Commissioner Newman?
Yes, when I was reading the ordinance, one section I noted that you haven't mentioned, and I wanted to learn a little more about it, was the 17.96.175. It's titled "Outdoor Dining on Private Property." And it's not clear to me, first of all, and that's with a conditional use permit. So first of all, is that in any particular geographical area? Is it throughout the city of Capitola, or what?
Yes, so that is throughout the city of Capitola. Most, I think all restaurants within Capitola have to get a conditional use permit in all zones. So it would be, well, not in all zones, in all commercial and mixed-use zones. So it would be applicable to our commercial and mixed-use zones where commercial is allowed. We created, can you see the screen, on the screen, the ordinance?
Right.
Okay, yes, so this 17.96.175 is, it would be an amendment to their conditional use permit.
So any restaurant in Capitola that is in a shopping center or anywhere where they have a parking lot or private property can expand into that with a conditional use permit, do they have to have any parking to support the additional tables?
So the, prior, so we do have an exception for outdoor dining decks within our parking ordinance. We do not have an exception for outdoor dining on private property with that in our ordinance. But however, the governor did just pass a new law that a city cannot, and I think it's effective for three years, that a city cannot require parking for outdoor dining. So for the next three years, if someone were to come in for an outdoor dining permit on private property, we would not be allowed to require parking.
So what are the criteria for a conditional use permit? So I'll take, for example, 405 Capitola Avenue, which was approved with no parking. And now they have property on which they can put outdoor dining.
So the criteria tied to this would be all of the criteria within a conditional use permit, of which I believe there's, I want to say, about 18 criteria.
Well, more on this later, but it seems to me that this ordinance, I mean, especially with that provision in there, this ordinance just blows up our complete commercial parking rules. And we ought to, if we're going to do this, we should just do away with commercial parking rules completely.
One suggestion I could make in reference to this is that the way that this is worded, I definitely think it could be applied towards any area within a private property. And we could specify that it cannot displace parking if that were the, well, the commission, within the 17.96.175.
Let's take, for example, the Cook House at, I think, 711 Capitola Avenue. So they were approved, and there's a certain number of parking spaces in that shopping center based on the square footage for different uses, et cetera. And now they put, it started with COVID, which I understood, but now, post-COVID, which we may be in soon, they have a dozen tables or so outside the building, which probably triples their capacity. And there's no additional parking requirement. So that shopping center is now, you know, completely, it just makes a complete mockery of our parking ordinance. So I don't know. I mean, I didn't notice that so much when this came up the first time till I noticed this provision for outdoor dining on private property.
I do think, I definitely hear what you're saying in the new standards that are by the state. We really don't have control over, but if you wanted to control not displacing parking within this section for outdoor dining and not allowing it within the parking areas, I think that is something we could amend into this section. However, if in the same example, the Cook House were to put their outdoor dining in the front setback, I hear your point that they've just intensified the use without providing parking in the parking lot, which...
You know, we've denied expansion of restaurants or lack of parking. I mean, all that should just be thrown out if, you know, if we're going this direction. It just doesn't make any sense to say you can't expand the interior of your restaurant because you don't have parking, but people can add all kinds of tables all over the place with no parking. Anyway.
It's almost a catch-22. It doesn't sound like there's an easy solution to that one.
Does the state law, has that taken effect, or it's going to take effect?
I believe it, I can check on that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. Well, when we get to discussion, I don't want to take up too much time. We get to discussion, I'll have some thoughts on where to go with this.
Thank you. I just have one question, Katie, about sidewalk dining, where the sidewalk has to be five feet wide, or I believe outside the village has to be four foot wide. We don't mention how much of that sidewalk has to be unobstructed. Are we just leaving that up to the restaurant owners? Or are we going to have a provision in that ordinance that says two feet, three feet, whatever, has to be unobstructed for people to get by?
That is the area that has to be unobstructed, the five feet unobstructed in the village.
Okay, okay, I must have read it wrong.
So I should make sure that it's worded correctly, though, because if that wasn't clear.
Okay.
Does that apply to the warp as well?
Excuse me?
Does that apply to the warp as well? There's only, you only need to walk around the warp with five feet clearance?
I believe so, but that can also change, like, men now. And it's considered the village, yeah.
You worried about spreading out on the warp?
Okay, well, let's open the public portion. If there's anybody wishing to speak to this item. Do we have any hands raised, Katie or Sean?
Yes, looks like we have three hands raised. And Sean, can you lead the charge of the question?
Mr. Chairman, before we take public hearing, can I make a comment?
Certainly.
And I know we want to involve the public as much as we can in everything we do. But I noticed that a lot of our speakers are going on and on and on. And most of the other hearings that I've seen, like before the coastal commission or other, they do impose some kind of time limit on people, and I think that would be good.
Yeah, we've done that when we have numerous speakers. When we only have one, I don't think we've done that. But I'll tell you what, how about if you're the timer and we'll give them a max of four minutes?
Okay.
Okay?
Our city clerk is prepared, she's got her timer ready, and she can do the timing. And you'll hear a noise when the four minutes has come to the completion.
Okay.
Thank you.
So who's our first speaker tonight?
Our first speaker is Mike. I'm going to enable him to speak now.
Okay.
Okay, can you hear me fine?
Yes, we can.
So I completely support the outdoor dining. I think it's been a fabulous addition to the city of Capitola. And I think it's really helped the merchants in a hard time. And I think it provides a good experience for the visitors to come here. My only caveat is that we've taken up a lot of the parking spots that are available for people with a village permit and have done nothing that I'm aware of to add some spots where the village permits can park, you know, since the others have been taken up. And I would just ask you to kind of consider the fact of the impact that's made on parking for people with village permits with still completely, I support the outdoor dining and what it has done for the city of Capitola.
Okay, Mike, would you care to identify yourself for the record?
Sure, my name is Mike Newell. I live actually in the Venetians in number four most of the year, which is where I'm at today. And yeah, that's who I am.
Okay, great, thank you, Mr. Newell. Okay, who's next?
We have English Ales Brewery.
Okay. This
Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm old enough that I don't know how to, on these contractions, I'm sorry. Anyhow, I'm, my name's Peter Blackwell. I have the showroom on 111 Capitola Avenue. Thank you so much for the earlier approval. The outside seating was probably a lifesaver for everybody, particularly us, because we were only there about 17 days before we had to close down for COVID-19. But when we were able to reopen, it was a boon to us. I understand the problems with parking. And I noticed that Capitola Avenue has been taken off of your proposal. And I'd like to request that you consider putting it back in. We only take up two parking spaces. That's the least of any other restaurant, most of the others are five plus. We take up two, we're parallel parking, so we don't stick out on the road. There are cars that park on either end. So we're not really subject to passing traffic causing any problems. I don't think it's been any, well, there have been no problems with us in the past 19 months or so. So I'd like to consider that, including us in that. And paying that, we have, we have some property in the front. Part of it's private property, front of the building, left or right side of the door, whichever way you're looking at it. From the front to the right. And it's about 14 by six, something like that. If we can't have a parflit, perhaps you would agree to allow us to pave that piece and put some seating there. We don't encroach on the sidewalk, and we wouldn't be encroaching on the road. And consequently, we wouldn't be taking up two parking spaces. So that would be the second option that I'd like you to consider. The first, of course, being to be able to continue with the two parking spaces.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Blackwell. We can consider the first tonight, but we can't consider the second. You'll have to work with staff on that proposal, okay? Thank you. Do we have another speaker wishing to address this, Sean?
Yes, we do. Our next speaker is Linda Smith. I've just unmuted. Linda?
Go ahead, Linda.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, first of all, hats off to staff for the comprehensive plan and the speed with which it's being processed. I think it's really going to make a difference for us in 2022. You guys are doing a great job. I really appreciate most of the changes that were recommended by the planning commission in October, specifically the prohibition of all music, not just the amplified music. I also like the requirement to activate the space. Closed dining decks do not reflect well, and staffing issues can be overcome when people would prefer to sit outside, which I expect to continue, you know, a lot of days of the week in the right season. I've organized my comments to the requested direction, and so I'll number them. Number one, I encourage the commissioners to allow the sidewalk dining to continue on Capitola Avenue. The reef dog table and chairs do not interfere with ample passage on the sidewalk. They facilitate the enjoyment of yet another unique dining experience, and they don't create a safety hazard. I'd really love to see that continue. Two, I encourage the commissioners to allow the dining deck on Capitola Avenue to continue as well. As I've indicated before, I have experienced a definite slowing of traffic when the dining decks are present. So I've enjoyed the space at Capitola Ales, and I don't feel it's a safety hazard, but quite the contrary. Number three, to require a design permit to be processed through the planning commission for all sidewalk dining is concerning. Perhaps there's a simple definition that can be established as a guide so staff could approve administratively, especially for the examples that are on private property and the reef dog on Capitola Avenue, which I've already said I'd like to see continue. Number four, I can encourage the commissioners to minimize the specific limits on materials further than are already stated. And you could add materials, and that would be great. But I'm really hoping to have the prototype come out with available characterization because it's nice to see the difference in architecture, it's nice to see the difference on the street. Then number five, business identification and informational science can be very helpful and not invasive when implemented correctly. Perhaps there's a way to allow for both while limiting the size and the quantity so you avoid the clutter effect. Number six, an inland seat for the central bicycle parking location is better than the clutter effect and the confusion of having each site have a bike rack. And I'm thinking about one site has a bike rack that's not being used, and another site's full or doesn't have a bike rack. And so somebody parks and then crosses property, and you wind up with a whole problem you didn't think about. Number seven, I've already indicated the requirement for activating the space is a really good add in my view. And I'd just like to make one more comment about the platform requirement. And I think that a built platform may do a couple of bad things. It allows for complication that doesn't really get you any benefit. And so I'm hoping that this prototype design will allow for characterization, and maybe it's in the flexibility of material or in, so they all don't look exactly the same. And thank you for listening and considering my comments. And thank you, most of all, for making this a priority for Capitola.
Thank you, Linda. Okay, we'll bring it back to the commission now. Is there anyone else, Sean?
Yes, we do have another
We have one more, okay.
I'm going to enable Doug to speak now.
Okay, cool. Guys, hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Thank you very much, you guys, for all this work you've done on this planning department and with the hardest hit sector of our city, our service industry. But we'll go right to the point. Of course, every restaurant and bar situation is different here. But I understand many took on debt that loads that still need to be repaid. Some property owners never gave breaks to back rent, and we still owe them. Most of the service industry is suffering an unprecedented lack of employees. Adding outdoor dining doesn't add employees, like that last lady said. We need employees. It's hard to get the sales to attain them. So the service industry is in a serious recovery mode. We have a lot to make up to to survive. This is where we need your help. We need to recover. The outdoor dining is key to that recovery. That's why the governor passed S.D. 314. This recovery bill gives outdoor dining and to-go alcohol an extended period with no additional fees so the service industry can recover. In the spirit of S.D. 14, now is not the time for the city to seek more income from the service industry. Using S.D. 14 as an example, the city requested, the city should request, I'm sorry, using S.D. 314 as an example, the city's requested fees for outdoor leases, permits, and rents should temporarily waive. Now is not the time to try and fill the city's coffers. Now is the time to help us recover. Remember that with recovery will come more taxes payable to you, the city, especially in the special district tax that goes right from the local businesses to the city's account. This increase in special district taxes will help the city recover from the estimated parking income losses. This increase in tax income could even possibly be more monies paid to the city than the 25 parking spots that are being lost. I may need to do the math on that with me. Give us a chance to recover, you guys. Don't charge the hardest hit with permit fees, leases, and rents. Follow the example of the state and temporarily eliminate the fees. If they can do it at state level, we can do this locally too, you guys. We really appreciate your help in this. It's been an amazing challenge. We love doing business in this city. We would love to continue to do business in this city, but we do need your help. And we're willing to work with you, but you got to work with us on these fees. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Doug.
We do have another hand raised.
Okay, is it a new speaker, Sean?
I believe so. Their name is A.
Okay.
Just enabled them to speak.
Yes, hello. My name is Eric Fawcett, and I'm a resident of Capitola, been here for 40 years. I am standing up in the middle of the road today, right in front of this steamroller that seems to be coming down the street. It's called a temporary outdoor dining ordinance. I want to emphasize the temporary part of this thing. I have seen and heard a lot of supposed information about what's going on here. And yet, whenever I find myself looking at that information, I see that it represents something different. For example, we're talking about the cost of those parking spots for a year. The total cost for 29, not 25, parking spaces, as you seem to maintain. I walk around town, I count 29 parking spaces. Will bring in a yearly revenue of $101,000. I understand also that the city is considering making a loan to one of these establishments of $130,000. And I'm wondering, where is all of this money going to come from? To pay for the lost revenues, to help support the businesses? I'm 100% behind the temporary outdoor dining ordinance, but making it permanent without due process, and that includes probably allowing the city of Capitola to vote on this issue. The numbers are not adding up. Like I said, there are 29 parking spaces. All of your paperwork mentions a maximum of 25. And going into the survey and the questions and answers that were given there, I find that there's no real way to follow the numbers through that survey. For example, in question number two concerning the loss of parking, the graph shows that over 50% of the people are not concerned and that a few people are concerned. Well, let me take those very same numbers and change them just slightly in their labeling. We have 53.85% that are not concerned about the loss of parking, whereas we have 46.14% of people that are concerned to very concerned. And that represents to me pretty much with a survey with a margin for error that you have 50/50 on the support of this whole thing to begin with. The next thing being that I think this whole thing is being steamrolled right through the city of Capitola and the residents of Capitola, and the residents are not being heard. I'm going to urge you to delay any zoning changes until after the COVID crisis has been completed. At this point, COVID restrictions say we can all dine indoors now. And there is no call for additional outdoor dining. Is the city encouraging itself to support business? Or are they just simply passing out money for outdoor dining? And I think this whole thing needs to be revisited in a very real way in addressing the idea of the temporary.
Sir, your time is just about up. Can you wrap it up, please?
Thank you. That's as much as I have to say. I want to encourage you to delay the changes and reconsider this whole steamroller.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll bring it back to the commissioner. Is there anyone else, Sean?
There is, we have some public comment to share through the email.
Okay.
So do the read aloud here.
You're supposed to read that?
Yeah, I thought I'd do the read aloud, but it's not going. So I'll read it to you. This is from Don Campbell. I would like to voice support for the permanent use of parking spaces for outdoor dining. It makes the more pleasant experience for visitors and diners, and is good for the business too. I also wish it could also include the outdoor seating for English Ales in Capitola Avenue as it does not disrupt the flow of traffic. Thanks for your consideration. Don Campbell, 402 Rosedale Court, Capitola. We have one more. Sorry, that's a little too fast. Not quite sure how you control that. There we go.
At 117 Longway in the Capitola Village, please note our opposition to the use of parking spaces as extensions of existing restaurants. While we encourage this temporary measure as a great way for the restaurants to keep their businesses open during the pandemic, there seems to be no specific reason to make it permanent. Traffic in the village is already very congested as cars slowly circle around the narrow streets trying to find an available parking space. In order to park near their residents, village residents, who do not have a parking space on their property, who do not have a parking space on their property must join the village visitors in the hunt for a space. There is no traffic control in the village and cars are often backed up and idling for up to ten to fifteen minutes. The hunt for parking space process is not only time-consuming but usually futile, leaving residents to have to walk a quarter mile from the city parking lot with packages, groceries, luggage, et cetera. This is very difficult for many, especially for the elderly and disabled, and there are not enough handicap spots in the village to accommodate them, and permanent elimination of more parking spaces will create greater difficulty. Other possible alternatives to using existing parking spaces: Use the parking lot or indoor space at the work and tile for the San Jose restaurants instead of street spaces. Close off San Jose to resident permit parking only. Allow resident permit parking on Capitola Avenue and the beachfront spaces. Another very concerning issue is safety. It seems unnecessarily risky to seat people in the street just a few feet from vehicles, especially with the number of establishments selling alcohol in the village. Also, while patrons are sitting in the parklets, they are closely exposed to exhaust emissions from idling cars. We know that air quality is degraded by traffic congestion slash emissions, so logic would suggest that a car idling just a few feet from people eating would be quite harmful. Respectfully submitted, Ben Wilson, Bendy. One seventeen Longway, Capitola, CA.
End.
That's the end. Okay, with that then, we'll close the public portion and bring it back to the commission. I know there are several questions we need to address for Katie. So before we take the questions, are there any comments or questions for Katie before she brings those questions to us? Nope. Okay, Katie, would you like to start with the questions?
Yes, I'm just going to share my screen again. The first question I have is for the sidewalk dining. Would the planning commission like to modify the proposed locations for sidewalk dining as mentioned in the staff report on Capitola Avenue? There's that existing sidewalk dining in front of Reeve Dog Deli that under the current draft, it would not be allowed. It's currently limited to Monterey Avenue and Capitola Ward.
I'm a no.
I would be in favor, this is Commissioner Westman, of having sidewalk dining on Capitola Avenue since we're not going to have street dining on there. And the applicant has to meet the requirement of keeping five foot clear, which will determine the locations where you can have the sidewalk dining or not. So for me, I would be in favor of having sidewalk dining on Capitola Avenue, but no street dining.
Anyone else want to weigh in on this one?
No.
How, can I ask how far that would go on Capitola Avenue? All the way to the freeway? Or?
We're talking about the village zoning district right now, is my understanding. So it would, I believe it would go up to where the trestle is, or maybe a little further. I can't remember where the line is.
I believe it's the trestle.
I would be a no with Commissioner Ruth. I support Commissioner Ruth's position on that.
Well, so this is Commissioner Wilk. I've got a question. Is the ward considered a sidewalk? And if so, what are we doing about that clearance, five feet?
It's considered right-of-way, and it has been included as an area which should be allowed to have sidewalk dining with five feet of clearance.
So for the ward, for anyone else who wants sidewalk dining, the way the ordinance is currently written, they would have to come to the planning commission and get a design review permit. And I'm assuming we have the ability to require a larger, clearer space than just the minimum five feet?
Yeah, at the time that it comes to planning commission for a design permit, if there are special circumstances tied to it, you could increase that, and I can make sure that that's clear within the ordinance as well.
Am I incorrect in believing that sidewalk dining is just an administrative permit? That it doesn't come to the planning commission?
No, we modified that in the updated ordinance, that they're all sidewalk dining with, throughout the city of Capitola is required to come before planning commission.
Okay. So what's the consensus here, commissioners? Is it your desire to modify the locations or to leave them as they are? We have two people that want to leave them as they are. One that's proposing allowing sidewalk dining on Capitola Avenue. Commissioner Wilk, Commissioner Courtney, would you like to weigh in?
This is Commissioner Christiansen. Go ahead, Commissioner Wilk.
Well, my tendency is to prohibit sidewalk dining in general. I agree with the person who talked about steamrolling this thing, and there's one thing for having a COVID set of emergency requirements, but, you know, we haven't had sidewalk dining, new zoning code, you know, whatever. I don't know why we need to change our zoning code to do anything than what's already there. I mean, they can always, the restaurants can come and ask for a variance, but to just allow sidewalk dining, I'm kind of against the whole notion of sidewalk dining in terms of creating new ordinances to allow.
Okay, well, that's a whole different issue. What do you propose for this question?
Well, it's the question, would the planning commission like to modify the proposed location for sidewalk dining? I guess my proposed location would be, yeah, zero.
Okay. And Commissioner Christiansen?
I concur with Commissioner Westman. I think that sidewalk dining on Capitola Avenue would be appropriate.
This is Commissioner Westman. So just a process question. You know, I know that we're going through Katie's questions right now, but when we get to the end, you know, I'm very much with Commissioner Wilk in that I think we're going way too fast on all of this. And so I'm hoping, you know, we're just going to answer these questions and then we'll have a time at the end to have other comments because, or else my answers are going to be different.
I'd like to, I have further comment on this.
I do, y'all.
Yes, may I?
Yeah, Commissioner Newman, go ahead.
I'm trying to think of who along Capitola Avenue, other than the one photo we have, which I think his operation there is a very, is a positive one, but I think it would be a mistake to use that as the prototype and expand from that to all of Capitola Avenue in the CB district. And I'm trying to think of who that might apply to. And for example, on the other side of the street, there's a restaurant that would be entitled to do sidewalk dining, and you would have to walk in the street now to, in order to walk down that side of Capitola Avenue, because there's very little room. And so I think this is all part of what people have been saying about it all going too fast. I think we're just, we're creating a monster here. And we're doing it without enough thoughtfulness. And when we get to that other section that I brought up earlier, I'll expand a little more on that. So I think we need to just step back.
I think we have to initiate some controls down there. I mean, I don't know how we let it proceed without engaging in some type of discussion and proposed ordinance or administrative procedures.
We don't expand it.
So clearly, there is a consensus to not have sidewalk dining on Capitola Avenue.
Correct. Okay.
So we can move on.
Thank you, Susan. We'll move on to the next question.
Okay, next is, would you like any changes to the proposed street locations? Currently, it would, for the street dining decks, with the Esplanade, Monterey Avenue, and San Jose Avenue, we've removed Capitola Avenue from the ordinance.
Any yeses to this question?
I have a change I would like to put forth.
I also have my hand raised.
Okay. I don't think that we should, the only place on Monterey Avenue that we're really talking about having street dining is at the bridge. And I don't mean to single out one particular business, but that area right there is the most congested part of Capitola Village. It's where everyone goes to drop off their children, their surfboards or whatever, to the beach. And for me, I think we should eliminate Monterey Avenue. I don't think we should, we should have it in that particular location, and that particular restaurant already has outdoor dining on other city property.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there is a valid argument for that, since they already have outdoor dining.
Yeah.
So I would like to comment on this as well.
Commissioner Wilk?
Okay. So I also agree with Commissioner Westman, but I'd like to go further in the sense that I think the notion of going through this paragraph by paragraph, going through the zoning code, is a recipe for disaster. And I think a way to avoid that disaster is to just specify the particular parking spaces that we are going to allow outdoor dining. We're talking about twenty-five spaces. That's been the edict from the city council that's come down. And there has been a lot of comments as to why certain areas should be eliminated. And I sent out a letter to the planning commission and everyone that basically puts my argument together that says we could specify a set of parking spaces along San Jose Avenue and along the Esplanade. And I can go into details of the explanation and reiterate my letter, but I think that's what we should go. I'd like to know if there's, have any support from the rest of the commissioners as to not doing a lottery system or having businesses apply helter-skelter, but we say this, these are the zones, these are the spaces that are going to be allowed for parklets and none others. And furthermore, once we do that, we could even say, whether you rent these out or not, these are parklets. And if you're not going to rent them out, we can turn them into, like Commissioner Westman said, oh, a parklet is something that has public access. So if they're not rented out, we could, we could turn them into, you know, public art exhibition, put benches in there, permanent landscape, you know, allow sidewalk vendors, maybe that's where you put your bike racks if they're not rented out. So I think we should specify the parklets, and that would simplify a lot of this. So do I have any support in that, going down that path? I can, I can, I've got two pages of notes as to why I think it makes sense, but if I don't have any support, I'll shut up.
Well, for me, I could support that, but I think there's something else that needs to happen first. And that is, you know, everything wraps around this prototype design and how it's going to work in diagonal parking spaces and parallel parking spaces. And until we have that design, we don't know what they're going to look like, how they're going to work in the parking spaces. The restaurant people don't know how much it's going to cost to construct them. Are there going to be decks? Are there not going to be decks? So I think we've sort of got the cart before the horse. We need to step back and figure out what kind of, you know, configuration is going to be used in these prototypes, because it'll be different from the diagonal and the parallel parking before we can make a lot of other decisions. You know, whether it gets to signage, bicycle parking, all of those things, it all depends on how this prototype works out. And then when we have the prototype, we'd know where they were going to go and what spaces they were going to use.
Well, can I suggest that maybe we can get the Art and Cultural Commission involved in the prototype, because they've got a big fat budget and they can do a call to artists. And they're always having trouble getting anything they do approved, so this might be something that would get them fired up, and we can get some prototypes out of them.
I'd like to add that this is the direction the council is going. We don't have a choice to change the direction right now. And if you want to change the choice, then there's no point in continuing this meeting at all, because we're just spinning our wheels. But this is the direction the council is going. This is what we've been instructed to do by the council. So we either proceed, or we don't proceed and just pass it on to the council the way it is.
We are proceeding. We are proceeding. The only question is, would we like to modify the proposed street dining locations? And I'm saying, yes, we can specify them very specifically.
I'd like to respond to that, Commissioner Ruth.
What?
So the council makes policy decisions like this. The only reason that it's coming to the planning commission is because they don't deal with applications on a day-to-day basis like we do. And so they want input from the planning commission based on the fact that we have maybe a little more experience in dealing with applications, conditional use permits. They get some, but we get them all the time. And so I think that the feedback and what I'm hearing here, the more I hear, the more I'm convinced that this is just an exercise in chaos right now. And I think that's the message that I would have for the council, that a short-term temporary extension of whatever they've got going now would help the businesses. And we need a lot of time to think this thing through, think through its parking implications, all sorts of aspects of it.
Okay. Listen, I don't disagree with you. I was responding to Mr. Wilk's request or suggestion that we just designate twenty-five parking spaces. That's a totally different direction. And that is not the direction we're going right now.
But it's logical, and that's why we need to spend more time thinking about this.
Well, I agree with Commissioner Newman and what he said. And, you know, I think we should go to the council, because they can easily extend the temporary program that we have in place right now, so the businesses won't suffer while we take time to work through all of these issues.
Okay. Well, for the rest of this meeting, what would you prepare to do? Do you want to pursue these questions or stop here and send that query to the council that it needs to continue the temporary program to allow more time for this to be figured out? What's the place?
They have to recommend that they put together a, like they have a parking commission once upon a time, they could put together a parklet commission and have a series of commissioners and councilmen and public volunteers to sit on that committee and come up with several options.
Katie, what do you need?
Well, I actually, I, after our last hearing on October, and I heard the concerns coming up of the commissioners of this being, you know, going so fast, I brought it up to our city attorney and asked for some advice on this matter. And she provided me some clarity that, you know, for this evening, it would be really great to get feedback on the ordinance as drafted. But in your motion, you can make a recommendation to the city council to delay adoption until, and then you could specify what that is. I know Commissioner Westman brought up delaying adoption of the ordinance until the city has prototype designers placed, or until, you know, just if we need more time. It's something I can bring back to them, this can, that we can, and they're actually looking at the continuance of the outdoor dining program that they're meeting next week, with a temporary, so that could, I could bring that to them. It's actually in the staff report tomorrow of the planning commission this evening, if you would like them to set this temporary outdoor dining in order to create more time to work on this ordinance. But I think tonight, if we can get, if I can get feedback on those items that you're ready to give feedback on, that would be great. But I think the recommendation can be to the planning commission, to the city council, to delay the adoption.
Okay, let's plow through the questions without a lot of breadth there. Okay, let's, let's plow through the questions without a lot of front walks here and see if we can get them done.
Okay, so for the, for the locations, I'm hearing that it's here, uh, two, two commissioners in favor of removing Monterey Avenue and also.
I could support removing Monterey Avenue.
That's three.
That would be three.
Okay.
Okay, next question.
Next question is, um, permit review process. During the last meeting, the planning commission asked that we add sidewalk dining areas to the required, the requirements for design commitments before planning commissions. I just wanted to ask, is that only within the village? Or would you like all sidewalk dining areas on the public sidewalks to come before planning commissions?
Okay, devoted, fully village or all?
Wait, so did they are enacting sidewalk dining throughout Capitola?
Yes. And I think what I heard from the first discussion is maybe we should consider removing sidewalk dining altogether on the ordinance. Uh, um, there, there was definitely.
I, I could go for removing sidewalk dining from this ordinance. I think it should be a separate ordinance, not included in the street dining program.
I agree with you.
I would agree. Okay, next question.
So are there, we specified materials, we, you were asked, you're asked to create some more objective standards. So we, that's the outdoor dining decks, the street dining decks. There are a lot of materials which is finished or painted wood, glass, ornamental steel or iron, and decorative masonry. Street dining decks, where the primary visible material is plastic, fabric, woven bamboo or chain link wiring, something is not allowed.
So these are the design permit findings for the custom decks or for the prototype?
This is for, um, I think it applies to all. It's the standard of, of, within the, um, one of the standards for dining decks, but within a prototype design, it would already, like our prototype designs would have to follow this, but it'll already be created for us and applied.
Okay, so this is, this a yes or no?
Yes. Can there be added, uh, wooden lattice to the permitted or things that aren't allowed? Like.
Yeah, so that makes that a yes. Why is the yes?
Okay, with, with adding that, uh, wooden lattice is permitted.
No, it's just the yeses to there. We can't like to specifically allow or prohibit other materials. We can't get into each material.
Right, specifically, don't we have to identify them?
That's what the prototype sounds like.
Yeah, I, I would say.
So we had the same thing on the ADU, right? We had a special consultant come in and he gave us all the different ADU things. We talked about materials, we were to material boards. And then we actually had something to review, not just a, a question thrown out, thrown out of code. I would like.
This is applicable to all, uh, the ADU, the, I'm sorry. The prototype dining deck will be reviewed by the planning commission as, as a municipal government. Any of the systems designs that come in, we create the new standards, um.
I think we should let the designers, let the designers decide what they wanna do. We don't need to design them.
Well, this is our, this is our public space. I would think, my opinion, is that this design should be driven by the city because it's our space and there should be some uniformity. It shouldn't be helter-skelter, there should be, uh, some consistency and some, you know, the utilization effort, not just this restaurant has bamboo and it's Thai, Taiwanese, and that one, and the western thing. We should, there should be parklets, these should be spaces that we allow the, the units that we.
Are, are you qualified, determined what materials should be allowed, which ones shouldn't? I'm not.
I, I think nothing should be allowed other than what's allowed in the prototype design and waiting to assess that one. And, uh, this is the theory.
I would be happy with this if we just set, uh, examples of materials that, you know, could be used or, you know, finished painted wood. The city would discourage, you know, the plastic, fabric, woven bamboo and chain link fence. That way it's open.
Okay, I agree with that. Okay, agreeing with Susan? Or anybody that says right now? Okay, next question.
Okay. Signs, would you like to allow one informational sign? Uh, with the standards we created, limit two working, limit two working sides and that the sign must be informational.
I think there should be a restaurant sign with their name and a sign for their menu.
Agreed.
I agree.
I'm fine with that. Okay.
Is there a sign on that?
An overriding objection to the ordinance.
I think we'll have those signs.
I think the signs ought to be determined by what the prototype's gonna look at and where the signs can go.
Yep, yeah. All right, public decision.
Okay, next question.
Okay, bicycle parking. Uh, currently we require two bicycle parking spaces. We also added a new alternative to pay and move towards the central bicycle parking location in the village. It would most, it would most likely be within other parking spaces that would have to be removed. So, um, is there support for this idea? The new and move option, or for the parking spaces in general?
I think if we, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I think if we have an inland parking program and we're gonna take out more parking spaces, they ought to come out of the 25 that's been allocated, not increase in the number of spaces we're losing in the village.
Agreed.
Agreed with you. Okay. Have an agreement on that?
Yes.
Next question.
Activation, the outdoor dining shall be open for use a minimum of five days a week, except in cases of inclement weather, due to the new standards.
Agreed.
Agreed. Next question.
Believe we just made it through all the questions.
All right, that was fine.
Yeah, I'm gonna share this with you. I think the, the slide after, speaking of the first two years. Uh, can you see that this is an alternative motion where we provided feedback on the draft ordinance, um, to council that your recommendation is to delay the adoption of the ordinance until the city has a prototype or until however you wanna specify that. But I, um, I believe that's what I'm hearing. So, or otherwise, our, our recommendation, my recommendation, or feedback is, uh, to move forward with the draft ordinance to the city council um, with the, with your new recommendations, changes, but I don't think there's a desire for, um.
I'll try to.
Mr. Newman? Okay.
I didn't hear what it said.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw out a motion just to see.
Okay.
If Congress will let him here. And I think the motion would be that, um, we provide feedback as, uh, just given to the, uh, community development director on the various issues on the draft ordinance. But that we recommend that the city council extend the temporary, uh, ordinance, emergency ordinance, for an additional period of time and not make any, uh, permanent changes until there is sufficient time to, uh, fully evaluate a new ordinance. And three, that the provision for outdoor dining on private property be separated completely from the proposed ordinance and dealt with, if at all, separately.
I'll second that motion.
Any questions on the motion?
Yeah, I thought Mr. Christy Wilk asked questions. Are we gonna get a chance to talk about other things in this ordinance? Because I, I would like to register my concern about the music question.
Okay, let's take this motion first. Okay, we have a roll call please Chloe?
Yes. Commissioner Christensen.
Hi.
Commissioner Newman.
Hi.
Commissioner Westman.
Hi.
Commissioner Wilk.
I'd like you to read the motion back because that one's off for both and I don't know what I'm voting on.
Okay, thank you. I apologize for not doing that earlier. So the motion by Commissioner Newman, seconded by Commissioner Westman, says that you provided feedback as indicated during this meeting to the, um, community development director and recommend that council extend temporary dining for an additional period of time and not make any permanent changes until there is sufficient time to fully evaluate a new ordinance and that the provision for outdoor dining on private property be completely separated from this ordinance on outdoor dining in the public space.
Is, is there a continuance included in this motion? Continue to December?
That was not said specifically.
I mean, after I'm in, I'm in the motion, I don't think, Chloe, did you mention, uh, anything in there about the prototype design being developed first?
I, I don't think that was in the motion.
Oh, I thought that was the.
Isn't the city council gonna deal with this next week?
No, council is reviewing the temporary program next week.
Yeah.
Well, I'd like them to, they'll have the minutes at least of this, where this, how comes this motion?
City council is scheduled to review this, the ordinance. We were, um, thinking on November 23rd. So I will bring forward your recommendation, but however the, yeah, for just a point of order, the, the continuance of, um, the temporary program, that's tied to an emergency order and they will be reviewing that next week. That's not really tied to the long-term ordinance. So it is, the, the recommendation that's giving me time of, you know, uh, isn't really tied to what you have before you tonight, it was just a recommendation to extend. Uh, we can bring that to the, the city council, definitely, and put that in the staff report tomorrow that was discussed at this hearing. But in terms of taking action alone in front of you, um, it would be good to get clarity on exactly what you would like us to achieve or totally bring this back to you or, um, in your recommendation, so.
I think that depends on what the city council does with extending the temporary ordinance. If they extend it for a year, then we have, uh, more time to deal with it.
Chloe, could we hear the motion one more time?
Yes. Provide, provided feedback as indicated during this meeting to the community development director, recommend that council extend the temporary dining program for an additional period of time and not make any permanent changes until there is sufficient time to fully evaluate a new ordinance and the provision for outdoor dining on private property be separated from outdoor dining on public property.
Okay, so we have.
Would I make a friendly amendment?
Okay, Mr. Wilk?
I would like to make a friendly amendment to include, uh, in, in, in order to review, uh, the prototype design. I'm gonna send it in there to kind of explain why we wanted the continuance or not the continuance, but the delay. And, and one of the reasons I think we did because we wanted to review the prototype design first. Including review the prototype design? Yes. Yeah, I would accept it.
I would accept it if the second.
Okay, we have a roll call please.
Yes, I'm gonna start at the top if that's okay. Commissioner Christensen.
Hi.
Commissioner Newman.
Hi.
Commissioner Westman.
Hi.
Commissioner Wilk.
Hi.
Chair Ruth.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, motion carries. We'll put that one to rest for tonight.
It will come back.
And we'll move on to the director's report. Katie, do you have a report?
Um, I think, I just wanna make sure of one thing. With, I know we have a motion passed. Were there, I, I know that Commissioner Wilk had asked you to make an additional comment.
I'm gonna go back to you.
Oh, okay. Um, so for director's report, I just wanna let you know at the last city council meeting, we knew, the updated inclusionary housing ordinance was adopted at the second meeting passed. Um, I don't have a presentation for you this evening, but I promised to have one to you in the near future because I think it's interesting and the outcomes that are clear there. But there's new alternatives, um, to housing developments. We'll make an amendment, they can pay a higher in-lose fee. The in-lose fee is increasing $10 per square foot to $25 per square foot. And that was, um, backed up by our next study. And I think it's gonna create some great opportunities for the city and we should be able to partner with them in process and hopefully be able to build more affordable housing. That's my director's report.
Okay, thank you Katie. Commissioners, communications, Mr. Wilk.
Thank you, I just wanted to, uh, register my concern about the ordinance not allowing any music whatsoever. Um, I can understand amplified music, but the notion of, uh, not hearing a violin and a romantic dinner at Caruso's, uh, seems to me like I'm missing out on something. Uh, perhaps a guitar or an accordion, if you like that kind of music. I just think acoustic music would be welcome and not be a noise, uh, problem. I don't know if anybody else agrees, but that's my opinion and I'd like to report.
Oh, I, now that you've done yours, I have one. Um, I do think that this program, however it gets adopted, is going to impact the residents trying to find places to live. So, uh, places to park, excuse me. And I think it would be nice for us to have some information about how many loading spaces, can the residents use those loading spaces? Why are they not allowed to park on Capitola Avenue or, you know, on parking on the Esplanade? Seems like we need to do something if we wanna keep the residential uses down there. And we probably want them since we have this residential overlay district. It doesn't allow them to become commercial anyway. So I would just like us to see when we talk about this again, have some consideration if there's something we could do to help out the residents down there.
Okay. Any other communications? I think we're done.
Go ahead.
Okay, we need a good turn?
Good night, everyone.
Have a great day.
Thank you. Thank you. Goodbye.